Welcome to everyone joining us for the February first, two thousand and twenty-two Lee Select Board Meeting. A reminder that we are recording this meeting. And we want to remind everyone, if you are, if you would like to be recognized, use the reaction button at the bottom. And click on raise hand. Also, just a reminder to stay muted unless you're speaking. And we are all set, Madam Chair.
Okay, well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Select Board Meeting, and we're going to go all the way down on our agenda. Right to the number one, which says minutes. And we have the open session minutes of January fourth and January eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of January fourth and January eighteen, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Bob Jones, aye.
Sean Renier, aye.
Yeah, Carlino, aye. So first up is, um, I'm sorry, we have no public hearings tonight. And we are in the public comment session right now. If there anyone out there that has public comments.
Just waiting a second, but I don't see any hands at this time.
Okay. Okay, shall we move along?
Yep, looks good.
Okay, so the first, under general business, this is not on the agenda. We had a last, we had a request from one of the churches for this sent into us a few weeks ago. It just somehow didn't get onto our agenda before. And I'll read it. It's from Pastor Doug Mann at the Berkshire Hills Baptist Church. And we, he says, we just had our annual building inspection. And I had requested that the selectmen waive the fee as they have done in previous years. Do you know if this was approved? So I didn't think this was very controversial because we do do it every year and we do it for all the other churches too. And I wondered if we would be allowed to act on this tonight.
What church is this for again, Patty?
The Berkshire Hills Baptist Church down on St. Street.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to waive the, the fee for the Berkshire Hills Baptist Church.
I'll, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Sean Renier, aye.
Bob Jones, aye.
Pat Carlin, oh, aye. Thank you. So the next order of business is we have Joe's Diner Common Dictator License. I'm not quite sure why it's a little bit late, but it is, but it's for two thousand and twenty-two. They applied on December tenth. Oh, I think she forgot to bring the check in, so we couldn't proceed until she had brought the check, which she did.
Yeah, the check is dated for this, this month or last month, January, that is, so. That makes sense.
Yeah. So unless anybody has questions? Meaning you're back.
I don't.
No, I have no question.
It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah. Go ahead, Bob.
I'll just, I'll make a motion to, to grant the common victory license for Joe's Diner.
Second.
All in favor?
Bob Jones, aye.
Sean Renier, aye.
Pat Carlin, oh, aye. Okay, so next up is Triton. The intermunicipal agreement for South Berkshire Collaborative, and I believe Jim Willis is with us to explain this.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Select Board, those tuning in tonight on CTSB. Jim Willis, Executive Director for the Triton Health District. Here to present the intermunicipal agreement, which we're trying to move along with the new ten town Southern Berkshire Public Health Collaborative. I, we also have Rich Muti on the call, who is, is an attorney working with us on all the shared service grants across the state. There's a whole team of technical assistance advisors trying to work with us on these new intermunicipal agreements. Because there's multiple shared service grantees that were awarded across the state. For the members of the Select Board, as well as those listening from home. Triton is the oldest health district in the state, created in nineteen twenty-nine to deliver comprehensive public health services. But one of the challenges across the state over several years is public health is not appropriately funded in all sectors of the Commonwealth. We rely on appropriations at town meeting. So many boards of health across the state don't even have staff, nor do they share services, or are they even meeting the minimum services for, for public health? And one of the struggles we've always had through Triton is we've never had a public health comprehensive nursing program. A, it's super expensive and B, it, it just takes a lot of resources to do that. And so, a few years ago, the, the governor wrote into law a special commission act to really study public health across the Commonwealth. In Massachusetts is probably the only state in, in the entire country where the state government actually doesn't fund public health. And so, it was really to look at minimum services, trying to increase capacity, workforce credentialing, and, and many others, and, and as the state was working through that process, COVID-nineteen pandemic hit us and it really showed the true colors of the lack of public health workforce across the Commonwealth. And, and so, a, as we were working our way through the pandemic, a, a grant application came out. And Triton being the lead municipality through the town of Lee, which is our fiscal host for Triton, wrote a very large comprehensive grant to create this new Southern Berkshire Public Health Collaborative, which is a ten town collaborative. And it's really intended to build a comprehensive public health nurse program, which many have already probably seen, we've already, we've already been doing this since May. And it's a third, potentially a thirteen-year, four-point-one-million-dollar grant. And the foundational piece is to really focus on really a robust, comprehensive public health nurse program, not only to deal with the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Well, we, we've just become approved as a vaccine program. And there's a lot of inequities in our community still, we have, we have an aging population. And so, part of this process with the grant is to solidify a working agreement with the ten town collaborative. You know, it's, um, other town councils have already reviewed it, we're working our way through those other towns. And Lee, as the fiscal host, makes total sense to start here. Again, there's no financial liability to the town of Lee. The entire program is grant-funded. Their Lee employees already, the nurses, and it's really to show the state and to recognize that we're really serious about sharing the public health nurse program. And so, we're, we're starting here and see where the process takes us.
Okay. Jim, I have one question, I, it just came up when you were talking. What do you mean the, the employees are already members of the town of Lee?
So, so, so if you, if you remember, the Triton District is, is a legal district. But Lee is our fiscal host, so our, all of our employees, all our current Triton employees are Lee employees.
Yeah.
So we charge, you know, our operating budget, each town pays their fair share through our town appropriations. But on paper, they're Lee employees because Lee offers the benefits, you know, unemployment. So the nurses that, although the part is ten town collaborative, they're still under the Triton auspice, which is the town of Lee. So our nurses are currently Lee employees, but they're, we're sharing the nurses through the other towns. Just like, just like a Triton, but we're just sharing the nurses with the other towns.
Okay. So I guess I gotta ask the next question. So of those nurses, how many of them are full-time employees for purposes of town of Lee benefits?
Well, so we have two full-time nurses, all covered by the grant. And so, not only are they providing services to Lee, Lennox, and Stockbridge, but they're also providing the other services to the other towns as well, all hundred percent covered by the grant.
Okay. Okay, thank you. John, Bob?
And no questions, what, uh, Jim, what are you looking for, uh, from, from us tonight specifically? You're just making us aware at this point.
So I think, good, good question, but I think step one is, you know, we did, working with Chris, a town administrator, we did send this to Jeremiah. We have, already have KP Law and some of the other towns as part of the collaborative, already kind of looking at it. It's a standard intermunicipal agreement, there's nothing earth-shattering or something, nothing of surprise. I, I think the first step is to make sure Jeremiah is okay with this. You know, and maybe refer it to him and, and I also have Rich Muti on the call too, and we, if there's any legal jargon we need to sort out. I think we can do that. Possibly, Bob, maybe referral initially to Jeremiah and then bring it back. The goal would be to, once that process is done, hopefully get the blessing of the Select Board, then we can start to send it out to the other towns and kind of just wrap this process up and really focus on the work rather than the administrative piece.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I just to mention, and Jim, I, I had a, a, a brief conversation with Jeremiah or later today, later this afternoon, and there was a couple of questions, I didn't get a chance to go through it too thoroughly with him, but we had some questions specifically on number ten that he had brought up. On the indemnification part, if there shouldn't be something specific to Lee in there. It just kind of mentions each municipality, but not, nothing specific to Lee in that, if we are the financial host. Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, I think I understand what you're saying, Chris, because we're sort of hosting the Triton Health Department. And there, there would be Lee employees, the nurses, right? So is there any exposure towards, to the town, you know, that we need to just sort of make sure that we're, we're aware of? We want to work anything else, else in there, I think that that might be smart to just consider a little bit before we sign off on this, but I think everything else makes sense to me. And you said there's no, it's all grant-funded, Jim, there's no financial.
Yeah, exactly, Sean, if, you know, regard, regarding the nu- number ten, obviously, I'll, I'll, I could talk to Jeremiah and, and Rich Muti is on the call too, who's helping us out with some of this stuff. And you, but you're absolutely right, um, you know, we want to make sure that Lee is protected. And I did work with Donna Toomey in, in the accounting and the HR department. You know, because there's, there's a, you know, we're, we're covered under liability too through the town of Lee, and we carry all those insurance riders already, already through the town of Lee. Any cost allocation that's ever needed for that, the grant's actually covering that. But you're right, we want to make sure Lee is comfortable with the language in number ten. And Rich, did you, Rich Muti, did you have any comments or questions on this? Because I know the indemnification came up in another town, but we want to make sure that Lee taking on the host agency is satisfied with whatever language, working with Jeremiah Pollard, who's our town council for Lee.
Sure. Thanks, everyone, good evening, Rich Mucci, nice to meet all of you. I've been providing technical assistance as Jim articulated to this collaborative and other collaboratives across the state. You raise a good question. Certainly, as we're going through this next phase where it's being vetted by town administrators, this question has come up. We can certainly add a, a line into that section that I think would, would satisfy your town council. And, and really, it has to do with, you know, the potential for unemployment insurance or any unforeseen expense that could arise, you know, based on just having these nurses employed by the town of Lee. And what we could do is just add a, a simple, a line that just said, uh, you know, if there were any liabilities incurred on behalf of the grant program, such as unemployment insurance or other unforeseen expenses, each of the member municipalities will proportionally share in the liability for such expenses. So that Lee wouldn't be on the hook for those type of expenses, and certainly that's something easily we could add to it, if that would, if that would help.
Um, thank you, that, that's helpful. Personally, I mean, I, I think it's a wonderful idea, and I think it's time to do something like this, but I guess we all would feel better if we had Jeremiah's blessing. So if, if you could put something in writing to what you just said, that effect, we can pass that along to him. And then hopefully he can get back to us and give us his blessing by our next meeting. Would that satisfy you? Jim, is that?
Absolutely, Madam Chair, yeah, and, and again, we, we actually budget for all those unemployment benefits as well through the grant. Because we're allowed to charge a percent administrative fees. Just like, just like we do with our tobacco program and our other programs. We, 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 we allocate those potential unforeseen costs through the administrative piece, so there will never be a financial life. We, you would never, we would never go to the town of Lee to ask to appropriate X dollars for unemployment. All that is all factored into the grant allocation.
Oh, well, that's good to know.
And I would never bring something for, that would cause us a financial liability for the town.
So Sean and Bob, are you all right with that? We send it to Jeremiah and we wait and get his approval and his blessing and then look and then meet to sign this again at our next meeting? You know, we get a okay from him?
I think that's the best course, thank you.
It works for me, Patty.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Great, thanks, everyone. Appreciate it.
We'll put it back on the agenda for our next meeting, okay?
Thank you all, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Next order of business. Oh, we have another grant application, and this is for the Mass Historical Commission. Sue Stone, are you in on the call?
She is here. So Susan, if you could just unmute yourself.
Yes, I'm here. And Bill Matthews, and I think Brian Noel as well, is here.
Well, we have in front of the, sorry, we have in front of this, Susan, the information you submitted, including the application.
Can they be unmuted or?
What?
See, Brian, Chris.
The bottom.
Would you like me to, we can unmute as well now to Brian and Bill? If they.
Do you see Brian?
Yes, Brian, Brian is on here now and Bill is as well, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, is everybody on, everybody can hear?
Uh, except Susan, you somehow got muted again, sorry. Okay, I think we're all good now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I just had said, Susan, we have all your information in front of us, including the completed application for the grant itself. I'm not going to read everything, there's quite a few pages here, I'm assuming Sean and Bob have, have read through it. If you just want to give us an overview of what it is and what it's going to be used for, that would be helpful.
The, the application is for a sixteen-thousand-dollar matching grant from the Mass Historical Society for the purposes of upgrading and improving our, in our historic properties inventory. It is required by the state, the Mass State. I'm, I'm going to let Bill speak to it because he's much more articulate than I. But, um, we are required mandated, the Historical Commission, to maintain an updated and accurate inventory of our historic properties. Um, Bill, would you carry me forward? Are you there, Bill?
Sure, I'll, I'll carry it forward for a few moments, just to say that we presently have an inventory, but it's forty years old and it's seriously therefore out of date. And this was at a time when, long before personal computers or electronic publishing had reached the stage it is in now. And in that, in the meantime, the requirements were considerably changed and altered. The current, I say current, the, the old inventory, inventories, uh, gives descriptions of three-hundred-and-twenty-nine properties, buildings, mostly a few, there's a, the Golden Hill Bridge is included, so structures that are of historical importance. But our recent cross-check against the assessor's database shows that for the oldest properties, we missed about twenty-five percent, and for newer properties, about fifty percent. And when I say newer, I'm talking about things that are, that are a hundred years old or older. It's really important that we have a, a current inventory, or at least something much more approximating a, a current inventory, just so that we are on a par with other towns that get grants from the state. Because any kind of improvement, such as the Eagle Mill, depending on, as it does, federal and, and state grants, has to have a current inventory. So it's, it's essential that we, we make some progress on this. It's going to be a multi-year progress, uh, program, but, uh, as I say, very important to the town.
Brian, do you have anything to answer to that, to add to that?
No, Susan, I think you and Bill have covered it very well.
I will say that, I'm sorry, go ahead, you have a question.
No, the only question I have is, I can't remember, have we already appropriated our sixteen-thousand at town meeting?
Last in the warrant end for two thousand and twenty-two, and that is also, we're going to have to have that, you know, repositioned, if you will, so that, because it will, yeah.
Okay, yeah, no, I just, I couldn't remember if we've already done this or if it was an upcoming thing. So we already have our share of the sixteen-thousand.
Now, but, but Patty, and it, it, we have to, once this thing is completed and stages in, it should be complete by two thousand and twenty-three. We still have to pay the thirty-two and they reimburse us the last, the sixteen. Yeah, do we understand that?
Um.
Chris?
It is in the, it is in the art, right now in the draft budget, it's gone to finance committee for another sixteen this year as well. Which we would then get back that half of the thirty-two when it's completed, is that, that correct, Susan?
That's correct. So it's, it's a, it's a Bosch there. But I just wanted to be upfront as far as when you see that sixteen on the next quadrant, that's coming back to you directly.
Okay. Um, something we can put out, take it out of, um.
The benefit to the town is, is just in public pride, there's a lot of interest in the history and the moving forward and the cultural aspects of Lee, and, um, this would be a lot of fun and the town, I think, would really enjoy it and benefit from it.
Oh, no, definitely. If we can spend sixteen to get sixteen, then I guess that's a good deal.
Thank you.
Sean, Bob?
I'm, I'm completely for that, I was involved in Great Barrington and the Historical Society and Historic District Commission down there, and I, and I really appreciate the importance of, of this work, and I, I thank all of you for doing the work because it, it makes a difference for, even for private homeowners who are working on their properties, this can be, be very, very helpful information that in case they're doing any work on their homes or, or, on any building.
Right. So just the last point is you guys have to all sign off on this and put your little signatures on this so that Chris can get it in the mail post haste. Because it's got to be, it's got to be in Boston on February seventh.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, just Patty's.
Just Patty's. So Patty, I'll, I'll make a motion to authorize the chair to sign such attachments as, as needed. And, uh, for the grant application of the Historical Commission.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Sean Renier, aye.
Bob Jones, aye.
Pat Carlin, oh, aye. Cindy, you got that information? Oh. Is Cindy on?
I don't see her.
No, she's muted.
Oh, yes, I see, okay.
Oh.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Sue, just so she can get it ready, I'll be in and when, the next couple of days and I'll sign it. Okay.
Thank you.
I called it.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Susan.
Yeah, thank you to the group. Okay, uh, next order of business is the Eagle Mill Financing. I believe we have a couple of people here tonight. John?
Uh, we have Mr. Cohen, Mrs. Peltier, and John, uh, Mr.
John Ritzensky.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, good evening, Madam Chair, this is Eileen Peltier, I'm the CEO at Berkshire Housing, and I'm actually going to hand it to Jeff to just do a brief introduction and then it will come back to me.
Thanks, I assume my mute is good now. First, let me say, uh, working with the Lee Historical Commission is fabulous, just because I see Susan and Bill are still there. They are so helpful and have been over the past, I don't know, nine years. But you guys should know that working with that commission is, is excellent. We all remember the groundbreaking we had in November. And we did that at the time because the Department of Housing and Community Development had approved in the July funding round in excess of sixteen million dollars for the construction and the renovation at the Eagle Mill. That comprises Phase One, which is the historic renovation of the Eagle Mill, of the Union Mill, and of the Machine Shop. The applications when submitted were based on estimates done by DEW Construction, which take an awfully long time to compile, and by the time they were done, I think the short story is COVID had overcome them. And as DHCD found in virtually all of their applications this round, prices, costs, and timing for this scope of construction had increased by about nineteen percent. And what that means for the Eagle Mill is that the approved funding was three-and-a-half-million dollars, round numbers, less than the current estimated cost of construction, essentially all because of COVID. DHCD has offered to increase their funding by two-and-a-half-million dollars. And they have a very strong ethic that the developer increase its funding and hopefully that the town of Lee will participate. Each and every one of us is important to DHCD for different reasons. John and Eileen are experts in this, I'm not, when it comes to the housing component, which is where most of this money's going. Let me just say that when the town approved the forty R funding for the Eagle Mill site, it created a significant amount of monies that either have already come to the town just for having approved that funding and a lot more, which John and Eileen can speak to as and when the Phase One units and Phase Two units are built. So let me ask John or Eileen to follow up and explain the details of the funding.
Yeah, so John's going to explain the details, I just really wanted to take a brief moment, being the relatively new CEO at Berkshire Housing, to introduce myself. Myself, I do, of course, know Chair Carlin, I've met her, but just wanted to let you know that I am here. Elton Ogden was the CEO at Berkshire Housing for many years, and I'm the new CEO. And I come from a long history of healthcare and affordable housing. So I was really excited to see the South Berkshire Collaborative, that's some really great work on public housing. But briefly, I guess I will just say, remind you all that, so this first phase of the project is fifty-six units, thirty-six to sixty percent area median income, and then another twenty up to eighty percent area median income. It's a great mix, and I'm sure that you're, you know, aware of the project overall. Just really briefly, Berke- Mix and I'm sure that you're, you know, aware of the project overall. Just really briefly Berkshire Housing. I'm sure you probably know this, but just to mention, we have four different properties that we own or manage are both. In Lee and have done that successfully for many years and we will be the. Management company for the Eagle Mill and we're looking forward to working with you on all of that. At this stage of the game, we are trying to close a substantial development gap. As Jeff alluded to, and I'll let John Ritzinski, who is Berkshire Housing's development partner. Explain the details of that, but I also did just want to note that also Matt Cropsey is on the call. He's our Berkshire Housing's Director of Real Estate Development and he'll be taking the lead. On the construction aspects of the projects representing Berkshire Housing during that phase of it. So John, why don't you jump in here?
Thank you. And thank you, Madam Chair and members of the of the board for. Hearing us tonight. It's a it's great to be here sort of in person. And I want to echo what Jeff said about the historic commission. I'm was thrilled to hear about the grant for the assessment of the properties because this. Maybe maybe it was a sign, but literally this morning I was on a call, a Zoom call regarding the Eagle Mill. Uh, discussing some arcane historic issue. And we literally pulled up on our screen the report from the property. Assessment from nineteen eighty two, which I assume is what was referred to be there earlier in the meeting, a forty year old assessment. For the Eagle Mill, it's fine. We have consultants who can pour through a forty year old assessment and. And it's completely sufficient for our needs, but it it would, I can tell you would be great for the other historic properties to be able to be appropriately assessed because. It's it's really important. Anyway, thank you. Just to echo what Jeff said. You know, we were so excited to receive the DHCD funding award this summer primarily because this Phase One and frankly, the later phases as well. There there really are driven by the commitment from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Most of those funds come through the Department of Housing and Community Development. Yeah, just without getting into weeds, a quick numbers game, if you will. Of that, we thought our project was going to be a twenty six million dollar project, the Phase One at the time this past summer. The DHCD funding represents about fifty seven percent of of that number. It's a huge amount of the money. As Jeff mentioned, what happened since our application over a year ago was the construction cost crisis. All COVID driven or, you know, related to COVID. It's not, we're not the only ones in this boat. All almost all or all of the other projects that DHCD funded in the last round have the same problem we have. And DHCD has decided wisely, of course, to support everybody, support all the projects. But they and they're willing to take the bulk of the of the role in filling these various gaps, but they really want everybody to to pitch in and that includes us and that includes. Municipalities. They were very specific about that and that's why we've come to make this request for additional funding. And it may seem small to DHCD, but. We know it's large for the town and it sent it sends a strong message to DHCD that we that everyone wants to help figure this hopefully temporary problem out. So the Jeff mentioned the three and a half million dollar construction cost increase. That's net of a few other things, but that's basically the number. DHCD is is willing to fund two and a half million dollars of it with the same, just more money in the same programs that they've already committed. And so it's incumbent upon us to fill the remaining gap and. We would respectfully request that the town consider increasing its already. Very helpful commitment to help us do that. We we prepared a brief memo a while back that I think everyone has seen. That outlines what we believe are. At least psychologically, some possible sources for for funding this, but I won't go into those details unless people have specific questions, but. You know, the other forty R zoning, which is a great stroke stroke of genius by the town to pursue several years ago, does of course bring financial benefit to the town and we'd like to. Help make that possible by pulling a building permit and building these, building these units. I'll stop there. I think we can take questions probably.
Okay, so let me just briefly tell you what I'm getting out of this and tell me if I'm correct or not. So there's going to be a gap that someone needs to fill, about a million dollars. And it's going to be done through four or five different ways, I guess. The town is being asked to. Contribute another one hundred thousand dollars. We've already contributed fifty thousand to the committed to it. We have not received any funding from the state as of today. We've already checked on that. So we do have as a town, we're going to receive be receiving two hundred thousand. By virtue of just accepting the forty R in our town. And then if I'm not mistaken, we'll be getting two other payments, one from Phase One. Once I believe it's once the building permits are issued.
Yes.
Of a hundred and sixty eight thousand and then Phase Two is two hundred and sixteen thousand. Altogether, that comes to about five hundred and eighty four thousand, although we've got a little bit of a. Math thing I I'm a little confused on, but anyways, so the town. Will be receiving approximately five hundred and eighty four thousand dollars. When the project is underway or finished. I'm not sure when the money's coming in, but it will be coming to us. We've already committed fifty thousand from an appropriation at a previous town meeting and. Uh, what they're asking us is to commit another one hundred thousand from these fees that we are going to receive. So not to affect our tax rate, but instead of getting five hundred and eighty four thousand, we would get four hundred and eighty four thousand. So my question is this, where is the rest? If we agree to this, where's the other nine hundred thousand coming from?
To that, John?
I'm sure.
The bulk of the equity to develop a project such as this historic. Comes from the creation by virtue of the renovation of historic tax credits. Those credits are issued from two different sources. One is the National Park Service. So they're federal and they amount to twenty percent of the qualified costs. It's a. It's a process, but it's you get twenty percent. That as a historic renovation, we qualify. With the state of Massachusetts for an equal. Amount of credits, but no one, no developer ever receives twenty percent. From the state of Massachusetts. You usually get in the neighborhood of ten percent, maybe twelve, somewhere in that range. You never really know. We've been in touch with. The Secretary of State's office and we're hoping. That because this project is so important to them as well. That at the end of the day, and it will take years, but at the end of the day. We will end up with the tax credits that we need in order to bridge whatever gap we have. I think that's.
Did you say years, Jeff?
Yes, you, the Massachusetts tax credit process is that you apply, I think it's three times a year. Maybe four, but it's I think it's three for an allocation. Of historic tax credit. So say we were. Say we had gotten just round number six million dollars from the National Park Service. That would entitle us to apply for up to six million from the state of Massachusetts and you apply three times a year. And you get allocated something. You don't come anywhere close to six million. You're lucky if you get to three. But I think because of our importance. To the state, to the Secretary of State. And others, they recognize the value of this project's importance and we're hoping that we're going to get enough. Over the years it takes because we might get three hundred thousand in 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 an application. So to get another couple million dollars could take two years, two and a half years of applications. And that's where I think the money will come from.
Okay.
Just a clarification, Madam Chair, if I could on the. So the two hundred thousand, the we have not received it yet, but all of I have confirmed all the paperwork has been submitted. That was pretty recent. And we got the last of that in, so we hopefully will see that soon. The other three hundred and eighty four. Would get issued after the building permits have been issued for for the project. But we do also, the other option that was brought up was was ARPA money under Section three point ten of Affordable Housing. And that money, we have received the first payment of that.
When would any of and when would any of either the hundred thousand or the fifty thousand be paid to anyone?
Um, I can answer that. It would be typically in these situations at sometime during construction. And it could, we're obviously considering it's a twenty nine million dollar project. We would be able to be really flexible about when we actually receive the money. It's more about the commitment that would allow us to close. And that's similar to Jeff's point about the historic tax credits. We need a commitment from the state, even if it takes a little while for the credits to flow to the project. So this it would be the same with the with the town money. It could be later in construct during construction, you know. Okay, yes.
But theoretically, you would receive. Two hundred thousand for the initial payment from the state. And in the initial payment from the state for the first phase, another hundred and eighty some thousand. You get. Three hundred and eighty thousand as soon as the up. In the neighborhood of three eighty, you would have received as soon as the building permits were issued for Phase One. And I don't think we're asking for that, any of that money till after you've gotten it.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, it 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 sounds, I understand what's going on. I think what the problem I'm having, I don't, is that. We don't have any idea how long this is going to go until we it can be a shovel in the ground. Is that correct?
Cool, um, so we will first off to reiterate, we wouldn't. Need any money until we were in construction. So just to reiterate that, and so for for some reason we saw on our face and for the biggest fools in town and took us three more years to get a shovel in the ground, we wouldn't need the money for three. Years and six months. So but. Yeah, this, the the by far the critical piece, I've I've been doing this quite a long time and I've done a lot of projects like this. Getting the approval from DHCD is by far the most difficult thing because there's such a huge component of the financing. So. That's although it's taking a frustratingly long time for everyone in the who cares in the town and for us. That was huge that we got that. We have this bump in the road, but they're and but they will solve it with us and I'm hoping that in a few weeks and we get back to them with revised plan. They give us the thumbs up and then we get in a queue to close the deal and then we close the project and start construction the next day. And then that will that will take us a few months for sure. It's very complicated, but um, we hope to be putting shovels in the ground this year, frankly.
Okay, so if I can ask a question, so receiving the historical tax credits isn't going to hold up the construction process?
No.
To bridge the gap in funding, that's not necessarily gonna hinder you from starting construction. This year as you, you know, say you want to or whenever, whenever, you know, possible.
Correct. It's a really good question. The answer is no, it will not hinder us. There's a nuance here that's, it would take an hour to probably talk about. Is the what kind of commitment or signal we get from the Massachusetts Historical Commission, which is controlled by Secretary Galvin, who allocates the credits. To allow us to close with that. So that's what we're working on right now is getting. A signal from them, but but it's very common because of the way this the Commonwealth. Mass Historical Commission allocates the state historic tax credits in the three funding rounds per year that Jeff mentioned. It's very common for projects to close, even though they will be. Continuing to submit applications every three months and all the funder, the funders will will allow you to count on a reasonable future allocation and. And so we we would, we would close with a reasonable assumption that in the next three, four, five rounds, we will get some money in. And that's it's up to come, it's up to the Mass Historical Commission to assure everybody that that's the case.
Let me remind all of us, we've received in excess of two million dollars so far. In tax credits allocations from the state. So they are significantly committed already. To the project. They're well aware of what's going on across the state and they're well aware of what we need. So we we couldn't ask for more from them. They've been great.
Um, well, as far as I'm concerned, Sean, and I just I'll open up just a minute. I have one more question. Picky Oon, I know, but my background is finances. On page two. I would like to know what the right number is because there's two different numbers for what we're qualifying for. And it's off by sixteen thousand dollars.
You are, yeah, I'm afraid, Madam Chair, that you are the correct, I'm happy that you're correct. The memo is. The memo is incorrect. The number should say five eighty four in in the forty R smart with a really different, yes.
So five eighty four is the right number?
Correct.
Okay.
And that that assume that once we pull permits for Phase Two, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And and I think it's just important to underline that this three hundred and eighty four thousand. We we don't get unless you you pull the you actually build the project, so.
But you you get two hundred.
We get two hundred, but the three, yeah.
Yes, you get two hundred because you passed the forty R.
Yeah, no, I I think it all makes sense for me. I'm definitely willing to work. With you guys is is, you know, as much as we have to to get this project under underway. I definitely understand the. The sort of inflation in in construction costs that are is going on right now. It's. Definitely. An issue, so I totally get it. Anyway, let's.
Bob?
I I agree. I understand with the with the increased costs and the COVID and and the holdup. Do you have a projection as to when you actually will start, you know, with removal of the buildings and that sort of thing?
Yes.
Has that changed?
Well, it's changed only because when we got everything in the summer, we thought we could start in four to five months, but once we found out about the construction thing, that obviously hinders us. The minute DHCD says yes, which we're hoping is in a few weeks with part and part of what we go back to them is with is with this commitment. It's a four month process to close. The way the closings work, when you when the full financial closing occurs. Construction starts immediately because I can't close without a building permit, without a construction contract signed and everything else. So. When we do, when we have the full closing, the construction starts immediately. So there's not a further, there's no further wait.
Thank you.
Okay.
Bob, there's nobody more anxious than me to see those houses. I I share everyone's desire, but believe me, I live it and get asked about it regularly.
Okay, so at this time, I guess the question that we're going to have to be deciding on is whether the town of Lee would like to make an. Another commitment of a hundred thousand dollars to this project, which will come from. The the funds that are due the town. Once the building permits are issued. Have I got that right?
Yeah, I the the two options, Patty, I think was from the the density bonus payment or ARPA would be the other payment option here. And it's my understanding neither of those would need to go for appropriation. The fifty thousand already did. More grant money, which 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 is. Under the selectmen's purview, so but we should say what commitment, whether.
We're doing.
Or or.
Then I guess I would, I would ask for a recommendation to. Allocate a hundred thousand dollars from our our funding towards this commitment. Well, it is the commitment, a hundred thousand dollars. For this project. I don't know if I'm saying it correctly.
I've just to let you, there is one hand. Up from a public member. As well, when you'd like to recognize them.
Okay. Hello? Hello? Yeah, I just I just had a question. What's forty R? Is it forty R zoning? Jimmy, is this you? Jim? Yes, what's forty R zoning? That's the only question I had.
There's a, there's an overlay district that was created. In that area, Patty.
Yeah, a few years ago.
Yeah.
You know, back in the middle, Jim. It was, it was a couple of years ago. We voted that. Yeah, at least a couple. And it's a mixed.
All right, go ahead.
Yeah, at least a couple. And it's a mixed, that's a mixed use.
It's just mixed use, basically. Mixed use development. Right. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Um, I, I, I don't have anything further.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Yeah, just one question, Patty, to be clear. We're, we're making a, a recommendation for this because it has to go to, does it have to be on the warrant or?
No.
No. We already have, we have, we, we can do this then.
Yes. In fact, I think, Chris, am I wrong at the, our next meeting? Or did we do it at our last meeting where we went through the A R T A funding?
So the, the February 15th meeting.
Yes.
We, I'll be bringing that ARPA proposal. So that would be included in this spreadsheet. So.
That'll be coming to us.
The ARPA, yeah.
Okay. So I think I have a motion for you, Patty. I move that we, we commit $100,000 from ARPA funds towards bridging the gap in, in the, in the Eagle Mill project.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay. Before I, I just want, so everyone understands, none of the money to be spent until the project has begun. I, am I correct then? Until the first, yeah.
This is just a commitment.
It's just a commitment. Yeah. Okay. All those in favor?
Sean Renier, aye.
Bob Jones, aye.
Pat Carlin, aye.
Patty, if I could just thank you guys for continuing to be so supportive. And before I go, I have a little bit of good news. Sullivan Station, Lucy's Latin Kitchen, as you may know, closed.
Yeah.
We are signing a lease in the next couple of days with another restaurant, which should open during March for that space. So.
Good. Sounds great.
New business coming to leave from Albany.
From Albany. Interesting.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
You're welcome. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Um, okay. The next order of business is, as everyone may or may not know, we've, we've had a little serious deficiency at the water department in the fact, given that we've had people who are left. And although we've advertised, it's on our website, we have not gotten any replacements yet. So we had to come up with a plan that D E P would accept. And Chris, I'm going to turn it over to you to briefly explain what's being done, if that's all right with you. But I just want everyone to know, we did get approval from D E P for the plan that's been put in motion for the time being. And if you know anybody, any young kid out of college who wants to learn to, to make a good living and get his water licenses, now's the time to do it. They're, they're hard to find.
Yeah. So that's, that's really where our deficiency is that we, we do have a new person who's hired. We, we actually lost two employees, both licensed employees in water distribution. We have a new person who has water experience and is in the process of getting licensed. Been working out very well. And hopefully he'll be all set and ready to go shortly with his D1 and then hopefully D2 later this year. Essentially what happened in that process, we have not been able to find, we, even with a, a lot of advertising, we haven't found an employee that's to hire that has the license right now. So we have a, a deficiency of, of two people. And we've been able to kind of put together a plan where we have the coverage by using some other existing employees and a couple of part-time people that have agreed to, to each work one day a week. So we can piece together the coverage that D E P requires us to have. So they've put this consent agreement together that we, that have asked us to sign by, at this meeting or to have the selectmen authorized to sign, which is saying we both are in agreement that we will continue with this sort of piece together compliance for the rest of, for the next 365 days while we have our person licensed and then hopefully find a, a second licensed person to have our full coverage. But they're, they're giving us the, the go ahead with that staffing plan for a year, which again, has the coverage we need, just not exactly in the way we, they usually do it with, with two full-time people. So. I hope that all makes sense. I'm happy to ask and answer any specific questions, but.
Does anybody have any questions of Chris? Because if not, I just want to say thank you because I know this was a, a real headache and a really important thing to try to figure out. And I know the water guys helped you and a little bit and gave you some ideas and, and we got approved. So that's the most important thing, that we were approved by D E P.
Yeah. So thank you, Patty. And we, all, all we've just asking now is a, a motion that the board sign that agreement from D E P for the next 365 years service. It requires signatures from all three selectmen.
Okay. We need a motion on that?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement with the, the D E P for the new structuring at the water department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Bob Jones, aye.
Sean Renier, aye.
Pat Carlin, aye.
And I know Cindy, Cindy might be.
I think we all have to sign that.
Yeah, I know Cindy was going to ask this, but I'll just bring it up because we, they would like it tomorrow, if possible, if, if, if you're all okay with stamps on that.
I'm okay.
For that.
Yeah, I'm, yes.
Okay. Okay. Now, I understand Neil Clark is joining us to talk about the fair share amendment.
Neil. Good evening, folks.
Oh, there you go.
And am I live, so to speak?
Yeah.
Everything's okay. Okay. Well, thank you very much for the opportunity. Yes, I'm, I'm coming before you this evening with two requests, actually, both that deal with the fair share amendment. And one is that the select board go on record as endorsing the fair share amendment. I believe you have the resolution in front of you. I hope you do. And the second request is that you place it on the warrant for the annual town meeting so that we can have that same opportunity to endorse the, the fair share amendment, which is a constitutional amendment that's definitely going to be on the ballot November 8th. It's a mechanism that will establish a dedicated, pretty significant revenue stream annually for public education and public transportation and infrastructure. So indeed, some of the things that you were talking about tonight, where people would pay their fair share. This is the same concept in that what, what it does is place a four cent per dollar surcharge on income that's over a million dollars. That's where the, the, the concept of fair share comes in here, that everybody's first million dollars of income wouldn't be affected whatsoever. It's just income that's over a million dollars and even that gets adjusted for inflation going forward. Believe it or not, it, it only impacts about 1% of the population. And that will, it's estimated that that would raise between one and $2 billion annually. That, that would go strictly for expenditures in public education, public transportation and infrastructure. Definitely areas that are critical for, you know, the future of the Commonwealth and, and the country. So it's something that I hope that, in fact, it was going to be on the ballot y- years before, but at the last minute, it got struck down by the S S J C on a technicality. And then the legislature itself took it up and 80% of them said, this is something that we want to have on the ballot because we need a revenue source for funding projects, particularly in public education and transportation. So it's something I hope you'll endorse and that you'll place on the warrant for the annual town meeting.
Okay. I, I personally, I don't think I have an issue with it at all. The only thing I would suggest is that I would just like Jeremiah to give it his blessing that the annual town meeting is the place to put it.
And, and if it's any consolation, this same process is going to be going on across the state as well. So Jeremiah might have a, a standard to say, you know, this is what we're going to do.
Right. Um, but you know, before I just say, yeah.
May I get your pardon?
I'm just going to say, just before I just said, yes, I mean, I'll give you my commitment to put it on if it's appropriate. That's all. Sean, Bob?
Yeah, that, that sounds, that sounds like a good idea for me. No, I definitely support this. So.
The same goes for me. I definitely support this fair share amendment. And as long as Jeremiah gives it the nod, I'm, I'm happy.
Is that good enough, Neil, for you?
Yes, indeed. And, and do I have your endorsement as well as the select board?
I, I'll make a motion to endorse the, the, the fair share. Is it an act amendment there? The fair share amendment? And place on the, the town meeting warrant pending town council's approval.
I'll second.
If I can just interject for a second, Sean, sorry to interrupt, that we should specify on the town meeting warrant, that would be a resolution on the town meeting warrant for that.
Okay. I meant that for place on the town meeting warrant as a resolution.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Sean Renier, aye.
Bob Jones, aye.
Pat Carlin, aye.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity. And all of you.
Thank you. Okay. Now we have an appointment of part-time firefighter, paramedic. Now that's under our business. So that's, so I can redo this. No. This is a letter from Brian Brown, Chief Brown, to Chris Britton and Lindsay. I would like to take a moment and introduce to you a candidate for part-time as needed employment within our agency. Mr. Sean Duma has been working in the EMS field for over 12 years in Western Mass as a paramedic. He is recently employed with Northampton Fire Rescue as a firefighter, paramedic. He has expressed interest in working part-time as needed for the town of Lee in similar capacities. After interviewing Sean, I would recommend him for appointment by our office to the position of part-time firefighter, paramedic. This would be pending the results of his Corey and a pre-employment physical. I feel he would make a good addition to our staff. If you have any further questions, do not hesitate to contact myself. Anybody got any questions? They'd like us to forward to Brian before we act on this?
Madam Chair, I, I just wanted to explain this was, so either last meeting or the meeting before, we brought our other part-time person, Tiffany Hartledge, to full-time status. And that's what opened up this part-time. So that's replacing. Yeah, we replace her as the former part-time, which is now full-time.
Okay. Sean, Bob?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve Sean Duma as a, as a part-time firefighter, paramedic for the town of Lee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Bob Jones, aye.
Sean Renier, aye.
Pat Carlin, aye. Welcome aboard.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to mention a to see a hand up that just went down from Peg Byron, but.
Okay.
So I don't know if you still had a question, Peg, but.
No, I was just going to thank the, thank you, the selectmen for going along with the fair share amendment. Thank you.
Thanks, Peg.
You're welcome. We're up to special town meeting discussion. And I think this is to kind of come up with a date at which we feel we're going to be comfortable with a special town meeting. I personally, I'm not married to any date. I had suggested going all the way out to March 24th, just so we know where we are in this whole virus thing. But.
Yeah.
I'm not married to it.
That would be my inclination as well, Patty.
Because we'll probably be inside. We're not going to be outside.
Yeah.
Oh, you don't want to do the football field in March?
No. No, thanks. And I can't see doing a Zoom meeting either. So.
Okay. Yeah, that works for me.
Does the 24th work for both of you?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Then I guess we probably should make a motion that we schedule a special town meeting for March 24th.
Yeah.
Details to follow.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make that motion that we schedule the meeting for March 24th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Bob Jones, aye.
Sean Renier, aye.
Pat Carlin, aye. Okay. We don't have any pending business right now. Town administrator, Chris, do you have anything?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Just wanted to mention that we, as, as we kind of talked about earlier, we have the ARPA proposal at the next meeting that is all set to go, which will reflect the Eagle Mill tonight as well. We also have the revenue and expense reports available on your desks. So look at those. And also I did want to just provide an update on the master plan as well. That, of course, is a topic that will likely be at the special town meeting, but I did want to let everyone know too that it did put in, submit an expression of interest in the state's one-stop grant process towards a potential grant up to $75,000 additional for the master plan. So we may still want to look at a, a backup at, at town meeting. But I did, did put that in one to let you know that that is in progress. So there won't be any, anything, any determinations on that till the fall. But we, we will have to put the grant application in this spring for it. So I did at this point, but it put our name in this for interest in that grant. And lastly, a couple of months ago, when we approved the money to be used for the cannabis impact fees, one of those is a feasibility study for public safety that would be paid for from, from cannabis provisions. And I did want to just provide an update that the draft is out to police and fire right now for review of that R F P. And hoping that that will go to the procurement officer by the end of February and then hopefully be able to go out for proposals in March. So once that's all. It, it is for $75,000. So we'll go through the whole sealed bid process and be put on combines and so forth. So she'll need a couple of weeks for that. But we hope to have an R F P out in March for that. And.
And this is just for a public safety study, correct?
Right. Correct. Yes. Which, which we again, was being paid for with cannabis money, not on, no tax money or anything like that.
Okay. Okay. And that brings us up to our next regular meeting, which will be February 15th at seven o'clock. Everybody stay warm. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion that, that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Sean Renier, aye.
Bob Jones, aye.
Pat Carlin, aye. Good night. Thank you.
Night. Thank you.